City Council and our EDA. We have, and before you, we have an agenda. And tonight's topic for this particular agenda is the Headwaters 123 project. And this meeting came out of a request from the Planning Commission. As members of Council and EDA will recall, we've had a number of conversations related to this parcel of land. And we are at the point in the project of Planning Commission considering a change in zoning for that parcel. And Planning Commission had asked for this workshop as an opportunity for us all to get on the same page and to just discuss our overall, the city's overall plans for this parcel and to help inform the planning decision that is being, that is before them. So kudos for the Planning Commission for requesting the meeting. Happy to, happy to have it on the schedule today. We are in workshop format. Although this is a large group, I would ask that we try to keep it as interactive as possible. Our format for this evening will be to hear a presentation from the Minnesota Technology Corridor. I believe we've got Mr. Saylor from Canexus Energy and Mr. Eng from Washington County CDA to present. Dan will also walk us through details of what else is considered as it relates specifically to the Headwaters 123 property. And then we'll open it wide up for questions between all participants here. So I would say let's maybe hold questions until we're able to get through the presentations and then let's have a robust Q and A session when we get to that portion. If you have a question, either use the chat feature that is as part of Zoom or just put your hand up. Eric, I would ask you as my counterpart and as the Chair of the Planning Commission to help me keep eyes on the screen and keep recognizing questions as they come up. Any logistics questions before we get started this evening? Again, we are in workshop format. Let's try to keep this as informational and interactive as possible, even though we are in this, unfortunately, we're in this remote session or remote format. Any logistics questions? Not hearing any. I would invite you all to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance as we kick off the meeting this evening. If you would like to shut your camera off before you stand for the pledge, you can do so in the bottom left of your tray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
America.
To the republic.
Or which is its name.
To its fam.
What nation.
Under God. Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
That's just.
A quick timing note as we kick off discussion this evening and note that the Planning Commission and City Council does have a hard stop at 6:30. And so we will look to adjourn this workshop at about 5:25. And so if there are topics, items that we need to sidebar and come back to at a later discussion, we'll look to move those items into a parking lot if necessary, just so we can keep the conversation moving and we can cover as much as possible here in this planned hour. With that, Patrick or Dan, anything further that you would like to add?
I think you covered everything.
Very good. We did have an open forum planned for this evening. Dan, do we have any members of the, or any participants for open forum tonight?
Let me see. See no emails, open forum this evening.
All right. There not being any, anything for the open forum. And because we do have such a large, a large group this evening, if we could, just do a quick round of introductions, just so everybody understands roles and who is at the table. Why don't, when I call on you, why don't you just do a quick introduction of name your role at the city? And if you have any burning questions that you want to make sure that get covered this evening, why don't you just toss that out there as well? Make it very quick. And then again, of course, we'll circle back to more Q and A as well. But maybe if we could start with Chair Lignis.
Eric Lignis from the Planning Commission. And I have no burning questions. I'm just very happy you get to run the meetings tonight. So thank you, Mara.
Very good. And I'm just going to go right across my screen and it might be in a different order than you. We'll do Councilmember Husnick next and then EDA member Finnivan next. Go ahead, Sam.
Turn your mic on.
Sam, you're muted.
How can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Sorry about that.
Okay, if he's done, Mark Finnivan, EDA member.
Very good. And we'll do Member Batty and then Member, Commissioner Batty and Member Hantash afterwards.
I'm Danus Batty, Planning Commission. I'm, I'm here to listen and I'll probably have some questions after the presentation.
Fantastic.
And I am Judy Hantash from the EDA.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Miller, and then we'll do Councilmember Munson next.
I'm Planning Commissioner, remember Kevin Miller, and I am here to listen primarily and, and I'm glad we're having this discussion. So thank you.
Everyone, Kelly Munson, City Council member. And no burning questions at this time. I'll wait till the presentation.
Excellent. That invited guest Bruce Saylor, and then we'll go with Commissioner Brink after.
Hi, Bruce Saylor. I'm the Principal for Community and Economic Development for Canexus Energy, and I manage our economic development efforts, efforts in our entire service territory.
Just a brain, Planning Commissioner, no questions yet.
Member Roberts, and then we'll do City Administrator Patrick Casey next.
Blake Roberts, EDA member, and don't have any questions, but interested to learn more.
Patrick Casey, City Administrator, be willing to answer questions as much as I can.
Do Member Erickson and then Zoning Administrator Hart afterwards. Go ahead.
Leif Erickson with the EDA.
Hi, Diamond Hart, City Forest Lake Zoning Administrator, and also happy to answer any questions.
Chriseng from Washington County and Councilmember Gerard up next. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mayoreng. Good evening, everyone. I'm Chriseng, the Economic Development Director for the Washington County CDA.
All of your, our City Council, no questions at this time.
Assistant Administrator Dan Undom and Member Jenny Lorch next. Go ahead, Dan.
Assistant City Administrator Dan Undom, and happy to answer any questions people have regarding the Headwaters 123.
Jenny Lorch, EDA member, no questions at this time.
Excellent. Deputy Clerk Karen Duroff, and then Commissioner Susan Young. Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Karen Duroff. I'm the Deputy Clerk for the city, and I'm the one that got you guys all here together. Any questions, technical or otherwise, I can help any way I can.
Susan Young, Planning Commission member. One of the burning questions that we, the Planning Commission asked for this is to better understand the EDAs and the City Council's goals with respect to the 123 project. And there are some competing development ideas, and I just wanted to understand, best understand the EDAs and Council's thoughts on this.
Fantastic. Look forward, look forward to that further discussion. Member Hantash, and then we've got, I believe, Community Member Gary Lee up next. Go ahead.
I am Judy Hantash from the EDA.
Excellent. Gary, you're on mute. If you wanted to say hi, you're welcome to. We're glad you're here. We also have Chief, Chief of Police Rick Peterson joining us this evening. Chief, you also are on mute. If you wanted to say hi, good opportunity to do so. And Planning Commissioner Mike Keen. Good evening, Mike.
Can you hear me?
All right. We can. Excellent.
Yeah, it won't, it won't pull up on my computer, so I'm using my phone. It just, you know, when I click on.
Are you, are you hearing us? Okay?
I can hear you.
All right. Very good. With that, I would like to turn the floor over to Bruce and Chris to talk further about Minnesota Technology Corridor. If you are ready now, fantastic. Dan, if you wanted to do any sort of an introduction, feel free to do so as well.
From my, I think that Chris and Bruce can kind of give the tea up for the tech corridor, and then I'll kind of follow with a little bit more of a granular on the 123, kind of how we got where we are today. So, but that'll turn it over to Chris and Bruce.
Chris, did you want to start or?
Okay. Yeah, thanks, everybody. Appreciate your, your time tonight and for letting Bruce and I join you. If it's okay, I'm going to share my screen with you. Let me know if you can see this. Power presentation, and I hope this works. Can I do that okay?
I can.
Is that sharing okay? Somebody give me a thumbs down. Is that working? Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So I do have, I want to, I recognize Commissioner Fran Yurin who's, who's watching. I just want to kind of set the discussion on why economic development is so important in Washington County. You can see that this is a chart that shows the overall commercial market values as a percentage of the total for all of the counties in the Seven County metro area. And you can see that Washington County falls just a little bit under the line of the statewide average. And what that means is that about 90% of our tax base in Washington County is paid for by non-commercial or industrial market values, so primarily residential and some agriculture. But for the most part, our residential property taxes do pick up a pretty significant percentage of, of the overall tax burden here in the county. And why is that important? Well, you can see by this chart here that, that shows that for every dollar that we receive in property taxes, generally speaking, about 29 cents in services received by commercial and industrial properties. For every dollar that a residential property tax pays in Washington County, or this is actually a national average, residential properties usually ask for about $1.16 in services. And so what's happening right now in Washington County is that the residential properties are growing very rapidly and at a pace that is maybe even considered by some not sustainable if we don't continue to see commercial and industrial property values grow here in the county. And I'm not suggesting that we raise the taxes on commercial industrial properties. I'm suggesting we grow that slice of the pie so that more of the overall tax burden is shared by commercial and industrial properties and not necessarily picked up by the residential taxes here in the county. So $1.16 versus 29 cents is, it's a pretty eye-opening statistic. And this is again, a national average that was conducted by the American Farmland Trust study probably about five, six years ago. And I'm going to just jump in briefly. And Bruce and I want to keep this presentation short to give you enough time to ask questions about the Minnesota Technology Corridor. But we just want to highlight again from a high level why we're trying to promote technology type businesses in the Forest Lake and Hugo area on the Washington County side, and then over in the Noka County, Columbus, Centerville, and Lionel Lakes. And so I'm going to turn it over to Bruce now and have him walk us through this presentation. And Bruce, just go ahead and let me know when you want me to advance the slides.
Okay. Getting some feedback. I think we're ready. Okay, Chris, could you advance, please? So kind of the first step is, is how we got to the Minnesota Technology Corridor. And over the last five years, Canexus Energy, we've received different requests for information for projects that all had similar requests. They were looking for areas, green space. Not everybody's looking for an existing building, but a lot of them now are looking for green space opportunities that have a high energy capacity, which means a lot of electric potential in the area, strong fiber network, available flatland. You know, there's other areas that's got, you know, green space, but rolling hills and a lot of ponds and things like that. So really, some of the similar things for these project requests was flatland with minimal owners. They're all, most of them want to be within 30 miles of the MSP airport. They're looking for a quality workforce. And what really bubbled up, that it, that really doesn't get into a lot of the details is that they're looking for collaboration. Couple of site selectors that we worked with said it's just amazing how they can go to an area and they've got counties fighting against each other, cities arguing against each other. But with this particular area, we've done something that's never done before is bring in the counties and the cities together. And that's one of the main criteria now that site selectors are looking for. Okay, Chris? So the collaboration really is the two counties, Noka County, Washington County, the five different cities, multiple utilities, I mean, Canexus Energy and Excel. We've got all fiber, five fiber providers and strong collaboration. Before COVID, we were meeting in person, and it was nice. I mean, we, all of us met together. We all looked for the greater good for the, the region. Canexus and Excel are on the same page. The five fiber companies are on the same page. So it's something that really hasn't been done before and it's, and it's becoming recognized. And really what we want to do is make sure that we all understand the benefit to the region. Okay, Chris? So really, the goals of the technology corridor first is to, you know, come up with a game plan. Because like I said, over the last five years, basically, we waited for the phone to ring. You know, if a site selector called us, we picked the phone up and say, yep, we have this and we have this. And we decided to flip that around. Instead of waiting for the phone call to ring, we're going to proactively and aggressively promote this region to a national, international audience and including some state, different agencies like D, the Department of Employment, Economic Development, Greater MSP, Great River Energy, Excel, and different site selectors. These groups are at national events. Chris and I, a lot of times can't make it or really our budgets don't really conform to go into a national event, but this group really does. So we wanted to basically brand an area that we can talk about and just move this thing forward. So again, we're looking to attract tech companies, not just data centers, but high-tech, high-precision companies that are looking for reliable energy capacity, high bandwidth workforce, and that they're close to the MSP airport. Okay, Chris? So we developed a website called the Minnesota Technology Corridor. We just launched it last August of 2019. So it's new. We're getting the word out. In fact, I just got the last quarter results on who's really going to these sites. And we've had, just the last quarter, we had 700 different users go to the site looking at it. Most of them are from the United States. We have nine from different countries, a lot of them in Europe. One of the highest groups that are hitting it is California companies, definitely in the San Francisco area. And San Francisco is really kind of a high-tech capital area. So we've been promoting different stories and articles about the tech talent that's in Minnesota. So we're excited about that. Okay, Chris? So again, I would encourage you to jump on that website to take a look at it for the, for time that we have here. We're not going to be able to go through it all, but there's also a nice video that we created from the get-go that we were going to just use it internally, just at Canexus Energy to get our Board of Directors understand and on board on it. But we decided to commercialize it. And it's really, it's really a well-done video that talks about the five different cities, the two counties, and it's pretty exciting. And then the website is pretty robust. We talked about premier sites that we have, Forest Lake sites, your site is on there. So we want to use these tools to help promote it to that national, international office or audience, especially the site selectors and different utilities. And really, it's all about marketing. How do we market this region? How do we get the best kept secret out? How do we market this region to a national audience? Okay, Chris?
And it's actually the end of the slideshow. If, if I could just add briefly, one of the things that we hear over and over again is that a site selector's role is not to keep a specific property in the running, it's to make that list as short as possible so they can eliminate sites. And what we're really trying to do is focus on that speed to market. So we want as much information as we can have available at our fingertips to get that in front of the site selectors so that we're on that shortlist and can be moved to that next round of reviews. And so I'm going to turn it back to Dan and talk a little bit about what we've done so far with the Forest Lake Headwaters site.
Thanks, Chris and Bruce, for that introduction. I think that really sums up a lot of the work that the tech corridor has done. I'm going to now get my screen shared here. Can everybody see my screen? What I'll do tonight is kind of go through kind of the local efforts that we've had related to the Headwaters 123 and kind of outline what the vision is for development of the site, and then kind of explain how we kind of got to where we are. Before I really dive into there, I kind of want to just give a brief synopsis of the approach that we've taken into site development here. On this particular parcel, the Headwaters 123, back in 2014, we actually did bring this to the EDA. At the time, there wasn't a lot of lots in the city. We had low lot supply. And we asked the EDA, should we start to market this or get this position for residential development at the time? The EDA came, came back and says, the direction we were given was not to develop it for residential development. They didn't want to compete directly with the private market. So we kind of went back and took a look at what can this site potentially develop into. And one of the main drivers of the approach is a way for us to create a job center within the city of Forest Lake. Job center creation does rank high when we do strategic planning at the EDA level, at the council level. Bringing in additional jobs to the city of Forest Lake is an activity that is identified quite frequently through those efforts. So we kind of looked at it through that lens and then started looking at, how do we do that? And the approach that we took here, I want it to be clear that we took a very methodical and data-driven approach to it. We wanted to make sure that the data supported the fact that we could use it as a job center creation, or job center for the city of Forest Lake. And we went to look to identify where we are going to make our investments for this particular parcel. We wanted to make sure that we had high-value studies, ones that are more evergreen, ones that are going to last a few years and aren't going to be kind of those temporary studies. And also ones that if we find out down the road that say tech technology is not a good fit for this particular parcel, we wanted to make sure those studies could be used to assist the next type of development that could potentially come this way. Just so everybody's aware of where this parcel is located, I do have a map here. It's located in Headwaters. It's 123 acres, as you see outlined here in the yellow. It's currently zoned MXR1, and what we're proposing changing that to is business park zoning. So why Headwaters 123? I think to what Bruce and Chris kind of alluded to in their studies, that there are some initial checkboxes or buckets of activity that you want to see, does the site meet these criteria? And when we looked at this, it was meeting all of those initial criteria for site selectors to use for data center selection or technology development. In fact, when we have submitted a site for RFIs in the past, requests for information for tech companies, we have ranked extremely high. We've made the shortlist on there. So that kind of gave us some indication that we might have that secret sauce that they're looking for to really get this position well for technology. So I kind of listed out, you know, the site, what are some of the criteria that this site currently has? It does have redundant power. Not only does it have redundant power within one provider, it has multiple providers. This one's at the edge of both Canexus and Excel territories, so they can get redundant power from two providers. Utilities are available adjacent to the site. It does have robust fiber capacity for the data that's required to get piped into the site. There's enough infrastructure there to support that. It's a low-risk site from an environmental standpoint. It's not sitting next to a fault line. It's not next to a fuel depot or any type of like adjacent uses that would be considered high risk. So it does meet that low-risk criteria. It is a large parcel, which are becoming more rare in the metro area as, as development occurs. And at this point, it also has a single owner, so you don't have to compile sites or negotiate with multiple partners if you are developing this. It is a single owner. It is under city control at this point. So we kind of went through, we, we were checking those initial boxes, we started looking at what can we do to really start to get down to the next level, to get under the hood and see if this actually is, you know, going to score well or, or site well with selectors. One of the first things that we did, we partnered with Washington County CDA through their pre-development grant fund program and authorized and executed a phase-one environmental and wetland delineation study for the site to see if there's anything in that phase-one or wetland delineation that would immediately knock that out, knock the site out of consideration. That was completed in 2019. Later in 2019, we partnered with Canexus Energy for a multi-vista drone LiDAR mapping of the site. What we did here was we had a drone equipped with LiDAR radar fly the site at a low level. So we actually have a 3D model of the site, actual on-the-ground conditions, contour mapping that can then be sent to site selectors who want to start looking at the potential layout for their, their center on the site. They can start to do some of that layout work based on the LiDAR mapping that we had done in 2019. One of the key exercises that we did go through is that we did go through a site scoring with Great River Energy, using criteria that they worked with the Lloyd Consulting Firm to develop. What this was, was a tabletop exercise where we went through, we kind of put our site selector hat on and said, does this site meet the criteria that we'd be looking for as a site selector? Went through a number of criteria. This property did score extremely well on that initial criteria. It's important to note that no, no site's going to score 100%, but we did score well. At the end of that exercise, the staff member from Great River Energy said, yeah, this actually would be a site that we recommend for, you know, continuation as development for technology or a data center use. So we kind of took all of that information back. At the end of 2019, we met with CBRE and signed a listing agreement with CBRE for getting this property positioned for development as a data center or a technology. One of the reasons why we went with CBRE is the fact that they're a national firm. This gets us in the, not only the local and regional market, but it gives us a national presence. Our current agent has contacts all over the country that they're, he's constantly in contact with. He's looking for what sites, you know, what companies are looking to develop a, a data center nationwide and is looking to bring those here to, you know, our particular site. So our CBRE listing gives us that national presence that's required in a, if you're trying to land a, a data center project. I'd hope that Dan Pearson, who was our listing agent, would have been able to attend to give the market, current market conditions update. Unfortunately, he is on a family vacation that was pre-scheduled, so he won't be able to be here for the market conditions. But I did kind of have a conversation with him, just to kind of get the lay of the land of where we are with market conditions. And one of the things that he did bring up is, I think we need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, economically, we are, everybody's being impacted by COVID-19. It's sort of, we don't quite know what that long-range impact is going to be, but there is a, an impact to development as a result of COVID-19. When you look at the commercial development sector, certain sectors have been impacted harder than other ones. The, you know, commercial retail, commercial and office space, some of those projects have been put on hold due to the, kind of the reshuffling of the deck to do the work from home. If you look at the data center market, it has the least impact based on COVID-19. Dan told me that he hadn't seen any projects that were already moving towards being built or in the ground, pause or stop as a result of COVID-19. There's been some adjustments to timelines, but overall, this particular market segment is still pretty strong coming out of the COVID-19 impact. I think that being said, it does help us by positioning this property for development as technology or data center helps us to get in that optimized market position or reaching the, the market share that has the least impact. And we're really kind of optimizing our position in the market by being in a technology sector. There's been some conversation of, do we need to keep the site together or can we split the site? Again, if you want to optimize the market position, the recommendation from Dan is to keep the site together. We want to try to hit a broad of a net or cast as broad of a net as we possibly can to get a site to select, or sites likely to choose this particular location and our best. And our best option is to keep the site together at this point in time. So why do we need to rezone the property? Um, this goes back to the old saying, the time is money. Um, and I, and I think you see this very crystal clear when you look at development and technology. These projects can move extremely fast. They want to go from project planning to in the ground as quickly as possible. Um, especially if you're looking at like a co-location agreement or co-location data center where you have multiple partners, um, who are leasing rack space within the data center. That developer does not make money until that site is up and running and they want to get up and running as quickly as possible. If there's a zoning delay, if they have to wait three months for the rezoning to happen, that can cause a project to go to another site, no matter how great that particular site is. So zoning delays can and will cost the city potential projects if we don't have our zoning in alignment with the end use. Kind of wanted to summarize where we are with the next steps on the rezoning side of it. Uh, currently right now, and Donovan can step into if he has anything that he wants to add to this particular slide, is that we are currently, uh, at the planning commission looking for a recommendation to city council for the rezoning. From there, city council will review it and can authorize the submission to the net council for the comp plan amendment. It then goes to the net council for their review. That review can take up to 120 days to complete. We also have to notify our affected, affected jurisdictions, uh, for their review as well. That'll run at the same time as the net council review. And at the end of that, once the net council completes the review, it'll come back to the city council for the formal adoption of the comp plan amendment and the zoning map amendment. So that's just the next steps on the rezoning. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding kind of how we got to where we are or what the next steps are. And what you see on your screen here, this actually is the LiDAR image that we got from, uh, from multi-vista. So this is the, um, LiDAR drone image that was shot last fall. So as you can see, we do have a, a quite a nice overview map here of the particular parcel. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, everybody. Um, Commissioner Miller, start Q and A session and just, um, raise hands and use the chat box here. So Commissioner Miller, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Dan. I, I do have a question and I guess maybe, you know, it's regarding this tech center. In your best guesstimate, you can hear me okay, Dan?
Yep.
In your best guesstimate, uh, how many people do you think a tech center would employ? Uh, that you're looking to put into this, uh, particular area? And what price range or how much money do you think, uh, something like that is going to cost? And how much revenue do you think it would bring to our city?
I, I mean, I can answer the, you know, the, the job side of it. I mean, a, a true data center, you know, once they're built, once you get kind of past the construction phase, you know, the jobs created due to the construction. I want to say you're in the ballpark of 10 to 15 jobs for, you know, the server technicians, the security people on site that are there for the, the direct employment. But you also look at, there are contracts that have to go out for the maintenance of the, um, electrical equipment for the fans, for the HVAC units that are in there. So there is that secondary market for supply or for, um, jobs that create the health support, not just the direct hire that the, the data center has. Um, in terms of the actual value of the, the project, um, I don't have specifics at this point. Unfortunately, I don't have a total value. They can range. I mean, again, it's going to be depending upon size of project, size of data center. If it's, you know, because again, these things kind of can run the gamut in terms of how big they actually are.
Go ahead again, Commissioner Miller.
Okay, just a follow-up then. You know, so I, I, I think it's a, I think it's a great, uh, great idea and, and I'm, and I'm on board. I, I just don't necessarily see this coming to fruition in the near future. Uh, in fact, I think it's a long ways down the road, if at all. And so my concern is, you know, you're creating, uh, some work while the thing is being built. Potentially, we're going to have 10 employee, there'll, there'll be 10 people that work there on a regular basis that may or may not live in our city. In order to get a tech center from a city standpoint, we're going to be looking at probably some tax incremental financing. We're probably looking at some incentives for them to, to come here and build and, and we're going to give away a lot for a few years. Where when you look at, uh, 123 acres, uh, to be developed in the single family lots, if that was something we as a city wanted to do, which I know originally they didn't want to compete with, uh, local developers and builders. But we have a real advantage as a city to develop lots, uh, much less expensively than they do. You know, potentially 400 and some homes, $350,000 average sale price, over $172 million in, in, in revenue just from the houses being built, all the jobs that come with it, all the tax base with it. And you don't have to give away anything. So that's my only concern is we're, we're, we're kind of putting a lot of eggs in one basket here from a city standpoint. To hope for something that we've been holding on for a long time that may or may not come to fruition. So just stating a statement, I'm sorry, that's just my opinion.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Who's next? Uh, Commissioner Young?
I, I disagree that we're going to have to give anybody TIF or we're going to have to give anybody stuff. Um, yes, Forest Lake has had a really bad habit in the past of giving away the farm on TIF projects. And folks that know me know that that's not my, my, my favorite three letters in the whole alphabet. Um, I, I think that one of the things that I've seen with a daughter and a brother that live in Austin, Texas, is that it's not the data center itself that has a tendency to, um, be the employment and, and, and the, the, the jobs thing. Um, I, basically what happens with the, the data centers is that they tend to attract and generate additionals. Um, and that is something that, that as long as I've lived in Forest Lake or the township, has been a desire is to try and get something that will help incubate, that will help spur additional development, things around it. Um, you know, a landfill would do that in a, in a, in a, uh, a Murph or something like that, transfer station would do that, but not as much as something as, as beneficial as a data center.
And if I could just piggyback off, uh, Commissioner Young's point about attracting other businesses, once you get, you know, a center to site or a technology firm to site. Given those kind of narrow band criteria that we talked about, you know, in the presentation is that what you tend to see, you, you do see cluster development happen within a sector or within a corridor. Based on if this particular parcel meets those needs, you do see other technology firms site around that because it, it, there aren't a lot of cities that have this unique set of characteristics that we do on this particular site. I mean, if you look kind of around the state of Minnesota, there's not a lot of cities that have two power providers that can provide redundant power. There's not a lot of locations that are as close as this one is to high fiber capaci, high capacity fiber. You know, I mean, so we are meeting a very, we're hitting that narrow band of criteria. So when you meet those criteria, that's when you tend to see development sort of cluster together. So you'll see one and you'll see multiples typically come in because a lot of that labor has already been done on that first development and the second one just sort of follows suit because that, those criteria are there.
Commissioner Fineman, I think you had your hand up and then we'll go to, um, our member Fineman, I think you had your hand up and then we'll go to, um, Commissioner Batty next. Go ahead, Mark. You're on mute. Mark, you're on mute.
There we go. Am I good now?
There you go. Yeah.
It finally shows up.
Perfect.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know how to get a sense and I don't know, anybody can give me a sense right now about where we stand in the competitive marketplace for the tech center, the data center, how, whatever businesses would build off of that. Um, I don't know that anybody can really tell us how far out that prospect is and how we stand in this kind of regional, maybe it's a national story, yes. Uh, where we stand at this point and how long that duration might be. So that remains an unknown to me. I really believe in the branding of the site. I really think you do need to say, we would like to direct this and we have a great asset and we're starting to see that it competes pretty well. And I do think we should move toward commercial, uh, property usage, business park, tech park. And there's plenty of other land to look at residentially. Um, so it's an asset and an opportunity to build that kind of core center out there and really feed a lot of existing sites already. But then I look at the fact that I don't know where that's headed. And I think that there's a more logical land use possibly along the golf course for one that speaks about residential. The land that's other, under other ownership that splits between us and Highway 61 probably will have a mixed use kind of application because it doesn't connect to 61 immediately right down the line. And so there'll probably be some kind of residential component to that as well. And I see this site as being a great location for something like a tech park, industrial park, not so much industrial, the business park. But I hate to see us lose an opportunity. Maybe everyone thinks the builders will be there in the future, uh, but right now there is a builder knocking on the door. He's offering a suggestion on the southern rim that makes some sense, seemed logical against that. And I wonder how much we're hurting ourselves if we do a compartmentalized piece of that site, subdivide, uh, allow a sale to take place, have residential on that edge. And then transition to what we've been talking about on the rest of the property. Uh, so it seems like an opportunity to do something more than just say, we need it all. And maybe we could segment a piece of it off.
Thank you for those comments. Before we move on to, um, Commissioner Batty, perhaps, um, Bruce and Chris, you can, um, maybe speak a little bit to what you're hearing about competitiveness of the site. Um, how we rank certainly within other sites on the technology corridor and how, um, what the market assessments are looking like. Give some thought to add there.
Yep, I can go ahead and start with that, Mayor. Um, you know, we have had a couple of inquiries on the Forest Lake site already. Uh, and like Dan has mentioned, we have scored really high, I would say in the top 10% of the other sites. You know, I don't have the, the data that I can show you that because a lot of these, uh, requests are confidential. But looking at everything that we've done and we rely a lot on Great River Energy, the power supplier that we own. And since they're out at the national events, you know, they're saying just what, what Dan mentioned in one of the slides, there is definitely some assets that are, uh, that Forest Lake has that probably other cities don't have. So, so it, and you know, as everyone knows, economic development is a long game. It's not a sprint, you know? So it's, you almost have to plant the seed and I understand that there's a certain point in time that he said, you know what? We tried it and it didn't work and let's go to plan B or let's go to a hybrid approach or something. But from what we see at this point in time, uh, it scores really high, uh, from a national presence. But I would say Dan from CBRE probably would be the most qualified person to really give you a definitive number to say where you would rank on that. So I would probably reach, Dan, have you reach back out to him?
That's great. Thank you. Um, Commissioner Batty, I think you were next.
We're left instead of up right. Um, I, um, I guess I want to pick up on that thread here. I, I don't have any, you know, I, I, I think we understand the, the kind of what's been done and kind of why it's been done. Uh, in terms of, you know, the, the potential, uh, positive, uh, aspects of the site and the pieces of the puzzle that need to be either there or very near, um, if not directly adjacent. But I'm, I haven't spent a lot of time on the, uh, on the website, uh, but I'm just, I'm curious. What, like, do we, do we have any idea of how many potential sites there are in the Washington County Anoka area? Uh, and is this, are we looking to draw one, uh, technology center? Is there, is this all about just a technology center or are there multiple technology sensor possibilities here? Uh, is this, I mean, is it a Silicon Valley type thing or is it, is this an isolated kind of one-shot deal? That's my first question.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Yeah, I can, uh, answer at least from the Conexus Energy perspective, you know, of our service territory. We have about a thousand square miles that we serve from Marina on St. Croix up to St. Cloud. Uh, this, this tech corridor and, you know, the Forest Lake site is definitely one of the top one, if not two, uh, premier sites that we believe, uh, has the potential. So again, that's just Conexus Energy looking at it. Uh, but the Forest Lake site would rank, uh, either number one or number two as far as potential, um, on that. And kind of going back to like who's looking at it from the state, from the, the website, we've got the state of Minnesota is the highest user, which is DED and some other state agencies on that. You have GON companies, uh, CBRE, TCF Financial, uh, Pross Anderson. Uh, and we've got a, had a couple other banks, uh, national banks that were looking at it because they all need data centers. So it, it doesn't tell you it's a lead, but they can, it's kind of telling you, here's who's looking at, uh, the Minnesota tech, technology quarter website, if that answers your question.
Well, I, I'm just, so we're looking at the potential of, of more than one.
Yes, oh, yes.
Uh, technology center. Um, okay, so that make, that makes sense. I'm, this is completely changing the, the subject, but I'm, um, when this, um, notion that the city doesn't want to compete with private developers and in developing or in selling property, making property available to developers for housing, that sort of thing. I'm, I don't know, I, I, I don't, I don't get a good feeling about that. I, I'm just, I mean, this is a, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that, that, that means that we should take a whole different course of action for just this piece of property. But I, the city, I, I, a number of years ago, I sat through a city council meeting where somebody got up and, and rattled off a list, quite a long list of city properties. And I'm, I'm guessing that not too many of those have been sold since then. But, I mean, that's not a reason, um, maybe, maybe this is just a, a tempest in a teapot. But this isn't a reason for guiding this thing toward a technology center that, because we don't want to compete with, uh, private developers. And I'm just, I was, and maybe it doesn't make any difference, but I was just kind of curious why that was part of the, uh, discussion. And the other thing is, um, the other question that is somewhat related, but, but a little bit different. And that is, if we change, it, it currently is on mixed, it's currently zoned mixed, mixed use. And the change would be to business park. And the reason for that, it, it, how is that going to, other than the process of rezoning it? Is that, is there anything other than that that's going to make it easier to, um, develop the property from the standpoint of process with the city? Is it going to shorten anything up other than just this, uh, the, uh, the cop plan amendment piece of this? Is there anything else that changes other than that?
Thank you, Commissioner Batty. Maybe we can break this up into two sections. I think your first comment is around, um, one of your comments was around the, this approach of not competing with private industry. And then you have some questions around why is the zoning important now? And I know the, um, the team has some thoughts on why change the zoning now. Um, but you know, I want to address your, your question around, you know, this concept of not competing with industry. Um, I, you know, I, I, I can only speak for myself, but I, I, I feel that this is, we're in a time of coming out of that. Um, and while, and somebody, I think, um, Commissioner Miller made the comment previously, and we've been fitting on this for a long time and we have. But I think it's only recently that we've been actively marketing it and actively bringing ourselves to the table. And so I think the question is, um, is there a timeline that we're comfortable with on holding this for commercial development? Recognizing we've, we haven't even tried and we potentially, given the list of attributes on this particular property, could be we potentially, given the list of attributes on this particular property, could be sitting on a really nice piece of commercial development? How long would we want to give that to allow for commercial to, um, materialize on that parcel? Um, because I have the perspective that at any point we decided that we're, we're done holding it, we need, we're going to flip the switch, if you will. We could put residential and it would fill in much like the rest of Headwaters parcel has filled in with residential. And I just have a perspective that that could happen at any time. I guess I'd like us to advocate for, let's take advantage of the opportunities given by the unique, um, pieces of this parcel, recognizing commercial is important and recognizing that the city really just put themselves in the market in the last 18 months on this parcel. Um, and, and so I, um, you know, I really appreciate the comments that Commissioner Miller made around, well, what about residential? And I agree to some extent, but once you flip the switch residential, it's not going to go the other direction. And so I think the question, part of the question on the table is how long would we hold? Um, and are we holding for the right opportunity, um, you know, preserving that parcel for commercial use? Um, I want to though, um, make a transition here to the other part of your question, which is around, um, why is zoning important now? Um, I'm not sure if this is a Donovan question or a Dan question around, um, that, you know, that's been kind of identified as a key barrier or as a key, um, hurdle to development that we would like to get off the table so that it's a more attractive parcel. Who wants to talk about?
I can, I can take just the, the hurdle side of it. When we request and we get RFI's, request for information, you know, I always have the caveat, is it zoned properly? I always have to put no, and then with the asterisk, yes, you know, we're willing to consider rezoning based on, you know, project. For some site selectors, if it's not zoned properly, you're immediately out. They're not going to go through the process of this, you know? So in essence, like, like as Chris mentioned, the, the goal is to try to keep you in as long as possible. The site selector wants to get you out as quickly as possible. And if we're looking for a way to eliminate parcel, zoning's not right, you're out of the, out of the list. You know, so if you have the zoning in line with the end use, that keeps you in the mix longer and makes you much more competitive. I mean, we have competitiveness from the infrastructure standpoint, from the location standpoint, but having, you know, we're now, we're starting to get to that granular level where selectors go when you look at, they want to know, is zoning right? What's that going to look like? And that zoning is a key piece of that having that zoning in alignment with the end use.
Member Erickson, go ahead.
Well, that really piggybacks off the question that, uh, I was thinking about and that is relative to us making the shortlist, you know, a few times, what are some of the other hurdles? I hear zoning, are there other hurdles that are keeping us from finishing at the top?
That's the one that I know of. I mean, unfortunately, when you get done, you don't necessarily get an after-action report as to why you didn't get selected. You're sort of left going, okay, what did we, you know, where did we miss last time? And that's why when we went through the exercise with Great River Energy, zoning came up as one, we're leaving points on the table by not having it zoned properly. We could get more points if we had it zoned correctly. Some of the other work that may make you more competitive is to really start to do those really detailed study reports that are very specific to technology, try to make the site, you know, um, that much more competitive. But kind of given that we have some easier stuff, low hanging fruit, so to speak, let's go after the low hanging fruit first. I mean, and, and to the RFI point, we just submitted this as part of one that came out in February and, um, right before COVID hit. And we were, at that point, competitive, but we had, again, caveat to zoning regulation and that, but low hanging fruit that we're, we're trying to collect as much of that as possible for these, for sites.
Thank you, Dan. Councilmember Gerard, I believe you've had your hand up a couple of times.
Thank you. Uh, I wanted to add that this is probably our last large parcel that we can do some type of commercial development. If you remember from the just past comprehensive plan, we had looked at the southwest corner of the city, a very large area for commercial development and off, uh, 180th and as close to the freeway as you could go. It now looks, according to what I understand, that Mindat is not considering that for an exit off the freeway. So this is the next best access we have for commercial development. So I'm, I'm all in favor with changing this and making it, uh, business park or commercial.
Thank you, Councilmember Gerard. Other questions?
I believe Susan's.
Commissioner, Commissioner Young, please. And Susan, you're on, you're on mute.
Okay, um, one of the things that's neat about this parcel is that all of the utilities, the water, the sewer, pretty much the roads, uh, the storm sewers, regional drainage, it's, it's all there. Um, the planning commission has been lobbied heavily by a particular developer, um, who wants to put houses in. One of the problems that I see with that particular one is that the city is going to have a very, very significant participation in getting road and sewer and water to those properties unless we allow them to be on individual wells and individual septics. And from a planning perspective, I'm not sure that's a great idea. Um, Patrick, you are probably the person that, that, that could help with this. Um, as I remember, our, our long-term financial plans and our utility plans, um, to put a few houses in an area, um, that developer will be willing to pay the cost of getting water and sewer and the, the street for those few houses, but they will probably not be willing to take on the burden of the large mains that are going to be needed there, the additional well capacity, that, that the full build-out street. Um, what would be the city's, um, hit if, if we were to be required by a potential development to move ahead in our long-range utility plans to provide the service to that area?
So if you're, if you're speaking about a data center or a technology corridor, uh, technology buildings, this parcel, um, those usually don't use a lot of water, sewer and things like that. So the impact would be fairly low. We have the water right along Headwaters Parkway there, the sewer along Headwaters Parkway. The difference between this and the residential proposed by the other developer is that he's way far off of that main road. And yes, he'd have to come, I believe that's, um, he'd have to come in and put the water sewer and, and things in. And just to comment on that developer, we have had, uh, offers to purchase that land and without getting into closed session material, uh, the two offers that were presented to the city were not a good thing. They were not, they had terms that we could never accept. Um, so, but back to your question, a main, large technology building or data center, we'd have no problem handling that, uh, because of the waters there, sewers there. It's when we get into residential that, that we've talked about is, will be an issue for that developer or the city if we have to help upsize the, the mains and upsize the sewer and things like that. Because what we'll do is we don't, if we require him to build something, we'll want it big enough to take other homes or other places. We will have a share of that. We'll charge him what we believe is the appropriate charge for that size development, but we will then refund him the upsize cost of any water mains, sewer mains and things like that. And I don't have a number about, but knowing the, the extent of the extension for those water and sewer mains, it would be pretty costly.
If I remember right, we were looking at 12s or 18s along Fenway there.
At, at least, yeah.
Um, and I'm not sure that that's dollars that Forest Lake has in its utility fund at the present time.
Uh, we do not.
I'd like to remind us all at 6:31.
Thank you, Donovan. Any last remaining questions, um, to wrap us up this evening? Otherwise, I would, if you have open additional questions, especially, you know, planning commission members, I know that you, um, have a decision before you that's been tabled. If there is information staff can provide to, um, kind of round out your question list, um, certainly, I'm sure staff would be willing to do so. So if you want to drop them a note, any remaining questions before we adjourn this session and move into the next workshop session?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, Commissioner, motion, there's a motion. Is there a second? I see a second from Commissioner Miller. And do we still have, Karen, are you able to do a quick roll call, which won't be quick with a group this size, but we should probably do a roll call vote to adjourn?
I can do that. Give me one second.
Everybody on mute.
I have Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Hantash.
Aye.
Councilmember Gerard.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Langness.
Aye.
I'm sorry, Chair Langness. Um, Councilmember Husnick.
Aye.
Commissioner Fineman.
Aye.
Commissioner Lorge.
Aye.
Mayor Bain.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for the participation tonight and we are adj-